I don't think you're missing anybody.
Oh, and no, Don, I'm missing Don in my notes, but we're good. Okay.
Don's here, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
In accordance with the governor's order of suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Chapter 30, Section 20 relating to the 20 norovirus emergency outbreak, the May 6, 2027 o'clock public meeting of the Norfolk Zoning Board of Appeals shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. Will turn to public access to this meeting shall be made utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software, HTTPS zoom.us for remote access. The software will allow users to view the meeting and send a comment or question to the chair via the Raise Your Hand function. Meeting will be recorded or rebroadcast by Norfolk Television. Make sure that everybody attending the meeting, please sign in with your first and last name. If you wish to ask a question, please again raise your hand. If you're having trouble, raise the hand function. You can actually physically raise your hand on the screen and Amy or Rich will recognize you. Tonight, we have a couple of hearings. We have variance hearing at 7 o'clock for 112 Myrtle Street. We also have a continuation of 7 Phillips Drive, now known as 19 Shire Drive. We have the comprehensive permit for 17 Lawrence Street, known as Abbeville. And we have the meeting house solar array, which we have to, the public hearing is still open. So at this time, we will begin the Myrtle Street variance hearing. Joe, could you read into the record, the notice to public record?
Yes. Notice hereby given in accordance with Chapter 40A of the Massachusetts General Laws and any amendments there, any amendments there too, that a public hearing is scheduled to be held by the Norfolk Zoning Board of Appeals on May 6, 2020, in Room 124 at Norfolk Municipal Building. This is for Dennis Schwimmer at 7:00 PM for a variance pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 10 as amended, and Section E1B of the Norfolk zoning bylaws to allow the construction of an addition at the rear of the building, which will violate the side setback requirement of 25 feet. The property is located 112 Myrtle Street, Assessors Map 9, Block 32, Lot 29, and is in the R3 zoning district.
Thank you, Joe. Dennis, are you going to be presenting for the applicant tonight? You, you have to take your mute off, Dennis.
Yes.
All right. Good evening, Dennis. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good. The floor is yours. Go ahead.
Oh, so in case it's not clear what, what we were trying to do, we're just putting on a small addition in the back. And we just need what is roughly about a foot and a half to square the end of the building. So we're just, we're a foot and a half shy of the 25 feet.
This is on the rear setback, correct?
Correct.
Amy, can you bring up the drawing so that the members can see it?
You got that, Rich?
Great. All right. All right. So that's, that's what you're referring to, Dennis, is along the rear setback where you've got 23.3 feet to the, to the line?
I'm sorry, and you can see with the existing building, there is a, you know, sort of a bump in and a bump out. So we're, we're just looking to square the end of the building off with the addition.
Okay.
Filling in that rectangle.
Sure. Okay. So the addition's going to be a 13.5 by 7.8 addition, is that right?
That's proposed, yeah.
Okay, okay.
So instead of meeting the 25, he's going to be 23.3?
Correct. What, what is the property abutting on the rear, Dennis? Can you tell us that?
It's the Santos property.
Okay. Mike.
Chairman, I cannot see the plan.
Who cannot see it?
It is on the screen.
Can you see it now, Tim?
No, I don't see it. Continue on, I can still listen.
Questions, questions? Is that it, Dennis, for your presentation?
I think one additional thing I'll add is my, my neighbor is on the, the right side as we're looking at the plan. And I, I've talked it over with them and they're, they're the only ones that would be visually impacted, but yet to a very small degree and they're fully on board with it.
Okay. So they're, they own the property to the right and to the rear view, is that right?
That's correct. That's their property line, yeah.
Okay, okay. Questions from the, all right, questions?
Yeah, can I just say something? This is Teresa. So the way that their property line comes in, it's at a diagonal. So that's why it hits sort of the, the end of this. It's not like a clear straight line from their property, kind of comes in an, in an odd shape, and that's why squaring off the building just hits the end of their property line.
All right. All right, questions from the board?
Yeah, Chris, this is Joe. I would be concerned, does this meet all the criteria that we have to have for the variance? Has that been filled out?
Amy, I, I don't think they've, they've, they've given us a variance criteria worksheet, yes.
All right, but, okay, but I mean, we'll have to review that, right?
When we get to deliberations, we can, we can discuss that.
Okay.
Right. Mr. Chairman, it's Michael Leesa. We have to look at one of the three criteria, soil condition, shape of the lot, topography. Based on your review, Chris or Rich, do we hit one of those?
Rich?
Amy, is Rich with us?
So I'm just trying to, hold on, let me just, I think if you can see the whole shape of this property is rather unconventional, it's like a triangle. So it seems to be that the shape of the lot certainly fit within that criteria. If this, this is the, the red line depicted in the, the limits of the property.
So the argument would be that he, he couldn't be able to square off such an addition like this without, you know, falling within the 25 by the small amount that he's presenting.
Remember, 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 we, this is a public hearing to ask the applicant questions. I don't think we want to deliberate it where you're actually deliberating.
Okay, I mean, yeah.
I mean, I guess questions for the applicant, I guess to me, the first question for the applicant would be is, have you approached your neighbor to buy the foot and a half so you can meet the rear setback?
No, but I, I've engaged them in conversation about what we wanted to do. And as I mentioned, they're fully on board with it. The only issue for them would be just a slight extension of the end of the building. So they would see it, but it's not, it's on the first story level. It doesn't, it's not on the second story level. It's, so it's rather low profile.
No, my question is, if you, if you, looking at their lot, you bought a foot and a half from them in that, in the, on your rear side by the 25.
25 feet. Solve this problem without a variance.
And have you, have you and them had that conversation? Because I think it's a, your lot size is, I, I mean, I don't know, I don't know if topography would be a, a condition here. But I'm just saying is, have you, you know, that to me would be the initial approach I would take is approaching them to buy the foot and a half to meet the rear setback. And then you wouldn't need a variance in order to do this.
Well, we were hoping not to get any more complicated, you know, involve any more complications. We're just hoping to keep it rather simple. So I appreciate that suggestion, but.
Would the other question have been maybe, could you have designed it differently to not, you know, fail to meet the setback?
The only way to do that, we, we did consider it, but we really would greatly prefer to avoid it. We could put a bump, a bump in on the, on the building itself, you know, not go out and not square the building. But for, for building construction and for aesthetics and everything else, it's just, it makes much more sense to square it off.
This is Don Hanson. I have a question.
Yeah.
Actually, two questions. The first is, can you show us approximately where the home next door is located relative to 112 Myrtle Street? And the second question is, what year was 112 Myrtle Street built?
Well, 112 Myrtle Street, the original structure here, the front of our house was built in 1802. And subsequently, it's been added on to.
I, I guess, let me continue with the second part of the question.
Yeah.
It would appear from looking at this, it's almost like when that structure was added on to with the area in the deck in the back, that it was deliberately cut out that way so that it could meet the zoning setback requirements depending on when it was built. Do you have any insight into that?
I, I have, I have no idea. And the, the only bump out in the back in the, in the building right there, I, I have no, I have no idea why they, why they did it like that. I think they added a bathroom. It's where the back bathroom is, so I presume they just added the bathroom. And when that was done, I'd have no idea.
Okay. And again, going back to the first part of the question is, can you kind of show, well, I don't know if you can show us, can you kind of tell us where the butter, looking at the map on the right of this map, where that a butter is located?
Yeah.
I can, I can pull up the map to show you as you're speaking, all right? Just hold on a second.
Okay. I guess I find it interesting that, that, that whatever addition was put in the back, of course, it all depends on the timing of it, but whatever addition literally cut out that corner, so is the meat. So, so it currently meets the 25-foot setback.
I think that was just the only thing there is a bathroom and everything else was like lawn and whatever they had. So they had 10 kids in this house, so I think they just said, we need a bathroom and put it in. But the house next door is far from the property and from the property line. And it is the first part, they wouldn't even be able to see the building because it's in their garage side. They don't even have a window on this side.
Can you see that on the screen?
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah, we're looking down into their driveway area. And then you can see the area of the proposed addition is a fair distance away, separated by a lawn area.
Can you blow that up once, Rich? One, one more time?
I don't think I can get any, I can't get any tighter than that.
Okay, all right. Hey, that's, that's very helpful right there. Just put your cursor, Rich, put your cursor over the addition spot right there. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
The, the concern is, Dennis, and I think maybe Rich did or didn't explain it to you, is we, we have to look at these as to whether or not the variance is because of the shape of your lot, which, or the topography, which it looks like it looks pretty flat there. Or the soil conditions, you know, that, that, those are our basic criterias that we use for variances. And we, we obviously, even, even though, as Mike Kaliza would say, this is de minimis in its needing a foot and a half, it's still a variance. And so we, it makes it very difficult. And I think my concern is that by not exploring, what to me would be the basic thing is asking your neighbor for the foot and a half. It, that's what we're trying to find is, we need, we need evidence to explain to us why this variance should be granted. Because as you can imagine, there's a number of properties in town that have the same situation. And we, and we don't, and the precedent is you do not just give out variances. They're not like a special permit. There has to be real underlying reasons. So that's what we're trying to look for, and that's where we need your help. If there's something that we're missing here, it's a pretty flat lot. Obviously, your neighbor owns a great deal of property in that area. And it doesn't look, again, the shape of your property is the shape of your property. It's just, it happens to be one of those properties that has a lot of frontage and then narrows off in the back. So can you give us some help while we have the public hearing open in this?
Well, I guess my, my only reaction is it's, it's too bad this, this property was originally included the neighboring property, but back in the 1980s or early 90s, they sold the adjacent piece. And for some reason or another, you know, they set, set up the property lines like this. So it's really, it's unfortunate that the property line on this side is so close to our house. I mean, it's just a condition that we sort of inherited.
Mr. Mr. McNeely, did you get a surveyor map of, of this?
Yes, we did.
Okay, because the GIS coordinates, which I know never looked that accurate, appeared at the corner even closer than the 23 and a half feet or 25 feet that it, that you show it currently has.
Yeah, we actually, we, we've had it recently surveyed and yeah, and I think if the survey line was on there, it's, it's at least 26 feet off the, the right side of the building right there.
Questions for the applicant while we have the public hearing open?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have the benefit of the plan on my screen, but can you tell from the plan that you folks are looking at, if Mr. McNeely was to acquire a foot and a half, would that make the neighbor's property non-conforming in some aspect or less conforming?
No, it wouldn't, Tim.
Okay.
Other questions for the applicant from the board? Amy, do we have anybody in the audience raising their hand or questions?
Don't see anybody with a hand up. Oh, wait, I take that back, yep. No, it's Don. Don, did you want to say something?
I, I already did. I, I'll put my hand down, sorry.
Okay.
Am I able to ask a question? This is Teresa.
Sure.
Oh, I'm just, I'm just curious. So if the, we approached the neighbor and they said, yeah, that's fine, why you still then have to figure out if they'll, you know, give you, or, you know, make an arrangement for the land? I'm just confused why if they don't have an issue with it, if you need to go through anything in particular.
Because it violates our zoning laws. So by granting a variance for this, we would be violating our own zoning laws. Or without a variance, we would be violating our own zoning laws. So even though your neighbor's saying it's okay, it's a violation of our zoning laws. And that's why, you know, again, if you acquired the foot and nine inches that you need, you actually wouldn't even be appearing before us. You would actually by right be able to. Now, does your neighbor, did your neighbor put a letter together? Was your neighbor, has your neighbor put, given you any kind of correspondence, discussing this with you or providing that for the board?
No, we've only had discussions. You know, I let them know exactly what we're trying to do. But that's, that's the extent of it. There's nothing in writing, no.
I mean, do you want to approach your neighbor and have us continue the public hearing maybe and talk to them? And, you know, maybe they'll, maybe they'll grant you the, the necessary land you need. And you could, and you could withdraw. It's up to you. I'll leave that option open for you for a minute.
And Chris, is there any, this is Joe. Is there anything that we can explain what that procedure looks like? If that was to be the granted or some other procedure gives them the, the extra foot or so? How difficult that is or not difficult to do?
Well, they, they would obviously have to purchase, purchase it from them. So they'd have to, obviously, they would do that. They have a plan already. They have a certified plot plan here or a surveyor's map. I mean, they could do that very easily with their neighbor and then record the registry of deeds.
Right. It's the recording stuff. How difficult would that be for them to do or?
I don't think that would be very difficult. It's, I don't think it's a, it would be a problem for them.
Something that their surveyor.
They've already gone out.
Okay.
I mean, they've done the hard work. The surveying is obviously the hard work.
Okay. I just thought I'd offer that as a talking point.
Dennis, do you, do you want to leave it open or would you prefer to?
Well, I, I think I'd rather push forward and see if you would allow us a variance. And I'm going to, you know, I guess one thing, we've got a great relationship with the neighbors, the wife next door, but not much of a relationship with the husband. And he's been a little, a little reluctant to help out on something. So I don't think I'll make any headway as far as purchasing any, any part of the land. Really don't.
Okay.
I mean, I'll give you an example. We've got a tree that is very dangerous on the corner, on the edge of the property. And if part of that comes down, it may hit our house. And he will not allow it to be taken down. So this is the kind of thing I'm dealing with. So, you know, I, I'm not, I'm not really in a position to, I mean, I could ask, but I, it's extremely doubtful. No, I'm not. We're not talking about a highly cooperative neighbor here.
You, it might be sensible to provide a little more input from the neighbor to then, because if, if you aren't granted a variance, your project can't go forward as designed. And to get, so you, you, you're probably potentially putting all your eggs in a basket that you might end up with zero in the end. So it might be worthwhile to kind of give the board a little more rationale to try to work with you. Essentially, what I'm saying, I would try to do a little bit more work with your neighbor before waiting for this board to make a decision on it. That's just an observer.
I'll echo what Rich said, Dennis. I think I, I would, I would, I would suggest, and I think it would be both for you and Teresa, is to maybe approach him one last time, explain to him the difficulty of variances. And, and maybe see if you can get some headway. And certainly, I'd be more than happy to join you if it helps to have a board member with you to discuss it with them. I just, I think it would be very much to your advantage. As opposed to, again, we, we have to be very cautious. We've, we've been in this situation before. And the fact that there may not be a cooperative relationship between you and your neighbor makes it even more difficult, I think, and it puts a little bit more strain on the board. And might put more strain on you as he may appeal it if we, if we granted it. So I mean, I, I guess my suggestion would be is maybe keep this open for one more hearing and try to see if you can contact your neighbor and again, be more than happy to assist you in that. To see if we could work something out or at least get some information from your neighbor via a letter or something that we could enter into the record before we close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add the, there was a comment made about the, the deed in the plan. That's, that's not a huge hurdle to overcome, but the, if that was the course of action, if you, Mr. McNeely was successful with the neighbor, he should also inquire about, if there's a mortgage on the property, he would have to get a partial lease of that little piece from the lender, which is again, not, not insurmountable depending on the lender, but it's another step.
Thank you, Tim. Good point. What do you think, Dennis?
Well, I, I think we'd like to do that. We'll approach the neighbor and continue.
Good, okay. All right. I think that's a, I think that's a wise choice. At this time then, could I hear a motion to continue the? Yes, Amy.
Donna Jones has a question.
Donna Jones does?
Yes.
All right, go ahead, Donna.
Oh, Donna Jones, North Street. Is there any wetland restriction on this property and does that come near the proposed addition?
We do have wetlands in the back, but the, the area of the proposed addition is within, it's inside the 50 and the 100-foot setback. And we've already got things in the works with the Conservation Commission.
When you say in the works, have you met with the Conservation Commission yet, Dennis?
We, we had an initial meeting and then we've just had our order of conditions all drawn up.
It's next week.
Right.
What was that, Amy?
The meeting is next week. So you mean you just had your notice of intent drawn up?
That's right.
Yeah. The notice of intent is drawn up. The hearing is next week.
Amy, what is our hearing on? On the 100-foot buffer?
Yes, it is.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I think, I think it'd be good if you approached your neighbor, maybe actually go through the concom hearing and then come back to us. And that way, we don't, we don't close the public hearing and limit your input. So I would ask at this time, we have a motion to continue the public hearing. Amy Wentz, our next available in June, would it be?
The 3rd, I believe. Actually, I was not quite prepared for that question. Yeah, the 3rd.
Okay. Do we have anything scheduled this time? I think we have, we don't have anything scheduled, do we?
No.
All right. Would, any third at 7 o'clock work for you, Dennis and Teresa?
What time, when?
7 o'clock on June 3rd.
Yes, that sounds fine.
Okay, great. So could I get a motion to continue the public hearing for 112 Myrtle Street till June 3rd at 7 o'clock PM?
So moved. All right, then I second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thanks, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis, Teresa. Yeah, and if you need help, Dennis, and I'll be more than happy to assist you, okay?
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Take care.
Bye.
Have a good night.
Excuse me, could you tell me who made that motion?
Don Hanson did.
Okay, and Joe second. Okay, thank you.
Okay. It is now 7:28. We're a little behind schedule. And let's, 7 Phillips Way, now known as 19 Shire Drive. Who will be presenting for that?
I will.
Hey, Jim, how are you?
Good, Neil.
Good. Okay, Jim, the floor is yours. I know you've, you've been before the planning board. Do you want to update, update us on where you are with that and what do you have?
We're still in the process of making all the revisions that were based on Beta's letter, and we also got a letter from the building department. So we're probably a day or two away from having that ready to resubmit to the planning board. For this tonight, I had forwarded the, the layout plan. And you can see basically from the last time we were before the board, we had parking, you know, in the front side of the building, for the building. And to the side of the building, there was the vehicle storage and whatnot. And then it was, I believe at the time, we were looking for, really for the parking in the front and the vehicle storage. So we've redesigned the site. We've gone from a 90 by 80 building to a 70 by 100 building. So we've given up a couple hundred square feet. We've moved the building a little closer to the road and did away with the parking that was between the building and the road. And we've put the parking to the rear of the building as well as the vehicle storage to the rear of the building. The stockpile areas and whatnot are pretty much where they were from before. And we've just added a, excuse me, a crushed stone access to get to the piles, as was one of the issues raised in the review letter. So, you know, for the purposes of this thing, we've done away with the parking. you know, for the purposes of this thing, we've done away with the parking between the building and the street. And we've done away with the vehicle storage um that was to the right hand side of the building. And all of that now is behind the building.
Okay, so what are you looking for from the board?
Um, well, I I believe we probably don't need one of the variances that we were there for before. And I was kind of confused on this because we we had closed the hearing. And then this kind of came up after the fact. So we've reopened the hearing, but I believe um it mainly had to do with the vehicle storage that was along the side of the building, which now has been moved to the rear.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just for a little bit of background, in the uh first application, the hearing was closed. And I know under the deliberation process, the question came up, the vehicles were over here. I think they were over here in the original plan. I could pull it up.
Yeah.
Um, and was that actually um the rear of the lot, not the building, not the orientation of the building? And doing a little bit more digging as far as analyzing the plan, it was in fact not to the rear of the lot, which is this location here where I have my cursor. Um, and because the hearing was already closed, you couldn't accept a new plan that would, which is the plan before you right now. So we had to readvertise the hearing in order to uh issue the special permit. I think the board at the time was fine with the permit. It was just that it didn't comply with the bylaw as far as the storage of the vehicles to the rear of the building, to the rear of the lot in the front, you know, uh Shire now, which was Phillips is the front of the lot, and this is the rear. So that's why it's here. In the revision to the plan, parking in the front yard was no longer needed because of this redesign. So essentially, it's to I believe to now just issue that special permit, which you originally intended to do. And this would be the plan of record associated with that special permit.
So the plan, so what he's looking for, Rich, is a special permit for a commercial vehicle storage in the rear of the yard, correct?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Uh, Chris, this is Joe. Yeah, I'm going back to the original notice of hearing. Um, we had a contractor headquarters in off highway area. Is that a special permit still required?
No, not not the use.
All right. So we because originally it was three special permits. We're down to just one, right?
Yeah, just for the the rear yard.
Okay.
And technically, it's not the contractor's headquarters. It's a commercial service.
Okay, I'm just going by the original uh application.
Yes. Yeah, the um that's not the correct use classification for this use. It's commercial service.
So it's just we have to just allow outdoor storage of more than three commercial vehicles limited to the rear yard, right? Okay.
That's what he's looking for, right?
Yes.
Okay, Jim, is that what you're looking for?
I believe so.
I could see you and Rich spent a lot of time on this.
I mean, I know what he's looking for. Maybe he's forgotten, but.
Over here. It's like pulling hen's teeth.
Was there a part of the permit that had to do with the material stockpiles? Or is that more a planning board issue?
That's that's.
Okay.
So just for um a little bit more information relative to why I'm differentiating contractors' headquarters versus commercial service. The uh the use of equipment here is related to commercial service. If you look at a contractor's headquarters in the definition of zoning bylaw, technically, there's a breadth where you could say you can't have a dump truck because it's because under contractors' headquarters, you can't have a business that is in the business of transferring earth as in a excavation type company. The dump trucks here are being used in relation to a commercial service use.
How? So okay, so a dump truck in a commercial service use usually is transporting something like earth, Rich, or stone.
Yeah, it could be earth, could be stone, yeah.
But you just said it could not. A dump truck in a contractor's headquarters couldn't be moving dirt.
If you if you if you fall, if you categorize this, what they're doing here as a contractor's headquarters, it doesn't fit. It's not permissible for the type of equipment associated with this use. However, there is commercial service, which more resembles what they do as a business, where you can use these vehicles as part of your business.
But not requiring a special permit?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
I I don't know about the board's feeling. I'm I'm a little I'm a little bothered by this application. I I just don't think it's complete at this time. I think we're getting new information, contractor services versus contractor headquarters. Um, nothing against you, Jim, but I think I think we need to have an application that you actually can present to us and and completely stand behind. And um unless somebody from the board has a problem, I think this this uh hearing should be continued until we can get more information from the applicant, the application can be clearer. And um we can get some defined answers to commercial or commercial services versus contractors' headquarters and 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 that other information. Does anybody have a problem with that? Or is anybody in agreement with me?
I agree with you, Chris. This is Joe. And I think it would make it a lot cleaner in terms of what we have to do for a decision, because it's good to be one special permit for one reason. And he qualifies for everything else that's on the application. That'd be fine.
Right. Jim, do you understand where we're coming from?
Yeah, I can.
I apologize. I apologize. I just I just don't think we have enough good information. And um and I think there's some confusion here, and I I want to make sure the board and you have the proper, we all have the proper information before we move forward. As Joe said, make a decision. So at this time, I would ask for a continuation of the nineteen Phillips Street special permit till June third at seven oh, seven oh five P M.
So moved.
Second.
Verify it's nineteen Shire Drive now.
I I apologize, Jim.
No, he's right. I'm sorry about that. So it's so moved.
And and Devin seconded it. All those in favor?
All right.
All right.
Thank you, great. All right. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Rich, we just have to do a little work with him and get this cleaner, please, if you could.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is Tom DePlastino, is Tom DePlastino out there yet?
Um, he is, yeah.
No, Tom, is Tom DePlastino?
Yes, I am.
Tom, I is um Amy, is anybody here from Net Grid?
Yes, yeah, I saw Nathan Collins here.
Nathan here. Uh, Tom, would you mind? We need about five minutes, I think, to close the public hearing for Next Grid. And I know your hearing is going to be a lot longer than his. Could you give us about five minutes since it's past seven fifteen to do his finish up his hearing?
Not a problem.
Yours? You don't mind?
No, not a problem at all.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Time, we will continue the public hearing for the Next Grid Incorporated. I think Nathan is here with us.
Yeah, and Brian Nigations here too.
Hi, Brian.
Brian's not here. He's not on this project. That's an engineer for the the old project. It's me, Daniel Cerber, the the applicant that met you guys on site.
That's on my side.
Nathan Collins, uh, our engineer.
Good evening.
Your record.
Evening. All right, we um we actually had a uh we actually had a sidewalk last, I think it was last Wednesday or Thursday evening. Uh, in attendance was uh Don Hanson, Joe Sebastiano, Devon Dow, and myself. Uh, does anybody have any questions regarding the uh the project after the public hearing? And Tim was there as well. I'm sorry, Tim Martin as well. Any questions for the applicant at this time? Joe?
No, I have no questions.
Don? Mike? Josie?
All set.
Uh, Tim?
No questions.
Gavin?
All set.
Great. Okay. And I have no question either. I think it was a it was a productive sidewalk. And um I think you cleared up most of the board's questions. So at this time, I'd ask for a motion to close the public hearing for the Next Grid Incorporated uh special permit for a ground mounted photo Baltic solar array up at Meeting House Lane.
So moved.
We have a second.
Second.
All those in favor? Yep.
Hi.
Hi, hi.
Dan, I don't know. I don't know if we'll get to deliberate this tonight, but we will uh we'll do our best, okay? Okay. Are you on any time crunch from us at all?
Uh, well, we have ever sourced that's going to be starting their site work really soon here. Actually, they just delivered their final sketch. So um, I think most of their work's in there right away. But if it's going to be more than a couple of weeks, I'm going to need to let them know.
Okay, okay. We'll see what we can do. You may want to check back in with Amy tomorrow, okay?
Okay, we'll do.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Thanks a lot.
Have a good evening.
Yeah, you too. Thanks.
Sorry about the name, Dan.
No problem.
All right.
Bye.
Okay, now we're back on schedule. So at this time, we're going to continue the comprehensive permit for Lawrence Street. And um at this time, I will turn it over to Tom DePlastino, his team, John Smolak.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, and the members of the board. For the record, John Smolak, uh, Smolak and Blon, attorney for the applicants. Uh, participating with me uh in tonight's hearings are Tom DePlastino, uh, the developer and principal of the applicants. Also with us is Rick Adro, United Consultants, our project engineer. Matt Murpham of Boller Engineering, our project landscape architect, and uh Bill Skelly of Green International Affiliates, our project traffic engineer. Uh, just by way of background, since our last hearing back on March twelfth, um, the applicant's project teams work have been working diligently to respond to peer review comments on civil stormwater, traffic, architecture, and landscape design. And we understand that most of those uh comments have been responded to and and addressed, but understand that uh Bill McGrath of uh the Beta Group reported on the status of these matters. And then our project team can respond to any of those outstanding issues this evening. Um, although discussed at the last hearings, uh, uh, as requested by the board, uh, the applicant has prepared a written response to the January sixth letter, uh, January sixth friends of Lawrence Street letter. And that has been submitted to the board uh as part of the record as well. Additionally, as we had mentioned at our last hearing, uh, we uh have and uh just submitted a copy of an A S T M Phase One Environmental Site Assessment. That was prepared by Steve Viteri of Medley Associates, and that has been filed. Uh, and lastly, we're waiting for information from the town Norfolk D P W uh to coordinate a plan for water main installation in Lawrence Street. And so we'll report on that a bit later uh this evening. Uh, so that is a a brief summary of uh where we are currently. And uh, if the board would like to uh hear from Mr. McGrath for us before we continue, we'd be happy to uh build the floor.
Great. Go ahead, Bill. The floor is yours.
Sure. Thank you. Um, I thought I'd take it in the order of traffic, architecture, landscape, and then civil site if if that works for everybody. So um, so we had done a couple of reviews of of the traffic report that was submitted. Uh, we sent a letter to the board dated April twenty third. Basically, our concerns had revolved around the background traffic, traffic from known developments, um, and then the traffic distribution. Uh, we did go back and forth with with Bill Scully uh to resolve most of those issues. Uh, in our last review, uh, we had some some minor discrepancies. Uh, there was some background traffic that we thought hadn't been added to Lawrence Street. Uh, that was addressed. We actually ran an independent analysis and found uh no significant issues as far as the operation and level of service at the the site drive or or any of the adjacent intersections. Uh, so from an analysis standpoint, uh, I think we're satisfied that that all the information's been presented and been presented correctly. Excuse me. Uh, we also looked at site distance. Um, and I'll touch on that when we do the the civil review. Uh, but a site triangle plan has been submitted um that we've reviewed and and we believe is accurate. And then that there were several recommendations uh for the for some mitigation, um installing stop signs at the uh the new site driveway at at Lawrence Street and also on Brett Farms Road. Um, as well as installing some thickly settled signs along Lawrence Street. Um, again, just to to make drivers aware that that it is a neighborhood and they should be aware of their speeds. Um, so and I think also um for the new intersection at at the site drive and Brett's Farm Road, uh, installing some intersection ahead signs as well on Lawrence Street. So I think, again, I think we've we've reviewed it. Um we've gotten the information that we asked for from the applicant. So I don't think we have any more comments or or input on the uh the traffic.
Any questions from the board with regard to the uh the traffic analysis or from Dan? Okay, keep going, Bill.
All right, one down. For the architecture, uh, again, Glenn Fontecchio, uh, our architectural sub had reviewed the plans. And and that the architectural plans are are the same, are very similar to to what had been presented previously for the the larger development. So Glenn had reviewed them at that time. Uh, there were around or two revisions. Uh, so so in terms of the architecture of the units, um, because they're very much the same, Glenn really didn't have any comments. He was satisfied with with what was presented. He did suggest um in the condominium area that some additional visitor parking uh be provided, uh, since there really isn't any on-street parking in that area. So uh, the revised plans do show some additional spaces. I believe there's a total of um fifteen spaces now for visitor parking outside of uh the driveways for the units. And the driveways for for some of the units um have driveways that are sufficient for additional parking as well. So again, I think the revisions that have been made, I think, have addressed our comments and Glenn's comments. So again, I think we don't have anything further unless the board or the public asks questions on the the architecture.
Okay. Um, any questions from the board with regard to architecture on the project? Dan, anything from you?
No, I'm I'm good.
Okay. All right, Bill. So far, you're two for.
All right. Not bad so far. Next is uh landscape architecture. Again, uh, we had initially reviewed the plans, I think, back and sent a letter dated April second to the board. Um there was some subsequent information revisions to address our comments that we received uh last week. Uh, we had the opportunity to to meet virtually with uh Tom and Matt and Rick uh to discuss some of the comments uh on May first. And then we sent a a subsequent letter to the board dated May fourth. So and I'll I'll just note um some of the references in in the letter are to the planning board. And that's that's really just a a cut and paste from from some of the site plan regulations. Any reference to the planning board really should be the Z B A since uh you're the approving authority for the for the project. I won't go through every every comment. Um, essentially, there'll be some waivers required um for things like spacing of street trees and and the number of street trees. But again, I think with the the overall landscape plan, I think that's what we're looking at. So the the details of the spacing, um, I think are really appropriate. I think are really appropriate to the landscape plan rather than the, the site plan regulations. Another comment was to provide a, a trail to access sort of the, the back end of the property, the, the undeveloped section. That's, that's been added. So I think that's a benefit, that's an upgrade. I think we're satisfied with that. They've added, there was a discussion, I think, at the, the last meeting about a, an island in the cul-de-sac, and the board did ask for that. So that's been added, and landscaping's been provided for that. We think the landscaping's appropriate. I think one thing that, that should be just clarified is, is the maintenance of that landscaping. Our understanding is that it will be through the, the homeowners association will maintain that. So unless Tom, unless, unless that's incorrect. Um, just.
Are you talking to me? Was Tom supposed to say something?
Um, I, I, I was not going to say anything, but yes, Bill is correct that the landscaping will be maintained by the HOA or the condominium association in those, in those areas in the condominium.
There's some, some other, we had asked, asked for the sidewalk to be extended along the cul-de-sac, which has been done. A continuous grass strip has been provided between the road and the, the sidewalk. As far as species of trees, I think we're satisfied that those species are, are something that the, the town has approved in the past. Three-inch caliper trees are gonna be provided. Again, something the board has requested in the past and is agreement with the, the town's regulations. We did have a question regarding some ledge that's on the property and how that's gonna be treated, particularly in area that's in the, the condo section. So I think the response was that the intent is to, to loam and seed over the ledge to the extent possible. If during construction that changes, then some of the ledge may have to be removed. And it'll be a, a fairly vertical face. But, but again, I think, I think that's, that's workable during construction. We asked for some additional screening along some parts of the property. That's been provided. Street lighting, again, street lighting's provided at, basically at the intersections, not continuous throughout the project. There, there will be lighting on the houses. So, so again, I think that's a, an approach that we had agreed to in the larger project, and we think it's still appropriate for this iteration. And the last comment has to do with, with proposed grading behind lots 10 and 11. And if I could hold off on that, we also addressed that in the, the civil site review. And we did have the opportunity to discuss it with, with Tom and his team on last Friday, and I think there's some revisions to what's being proposed. So we, we had concerns about sort of the stepping of retaining walls. There were four or five retaining walls proposed behind those houses to, to support the grading. So if I can hold off on that until we go through the civil site reviews, I think it might be better.
Sure. Any, any questions with regard to the landscape design for, for Bill from the board?
There is the question, we did have a, Mr. Chairman, sorry, a little bit of back and forth just on the, the street light fixture type. What's being proposed is something that is not consistent with the planning board regulations as far as the fixture goes. The fixtures right now currently in subdivision regs are more of a traditional style lamp post that you see around town. The designers felt that the fixture type being chosen was probably a more appropriate fixture type and, and design for residential subdivisions that perhaps are current regs will maybe not up with modern trends relative to street lighting. So what did, exchanged back and forth with email was perhaps, and I did actually put it on the planning board agenda for next week to just talk about streetlights in general. If they, if the, and you're obviously, you're acting as the planning board in this case, so you can do what you see appropriate in this case, but trying to get a sense of maybe if we're gonna maybe go in a different direction townwide, if it's future 40Bs and regular conventional subdivisions, if maybe we want to change the fixture type from this point forward. So I'm not opposed, you know, like I'm not suggesting to be opposed to what's being proposed, but just have a, maybe a common direction going forward with fixture types.
Thank you, Rich. You may want to change your shirt for the next meeting too, by the way. All right, go ahead, Bill.
Well, just in regard to the streetlights, what I would add there is they should be cutoff fixtures, whatever the style is, so.
And that's, that's what these are. They're, the, the ones we're proposing are full cutoff LED fixtures that are kind of a transitional style, not quite completely traditional, but not very modern either. They, they sort of straddle the, that aesthetic. So we, we think they're pretty appropriate, open to discussion, but I, I think it's a good, good fixture for this, for this neighborhood and does provide all the dark sky compliance and, and full cutoff that, that we'd be looking for.
Matt, are they different from what you're using at the enclave?
No.
Same fixture?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, thanks. Bill, go ahead.
All right, so the civil site review. Again, we had done the initial review and provided a, a letter to the board dated May, uh, March 5th, excuse me. We did get some draft responses from UCI from Rick. And then we received some revised plans, I think about a week and a half or so ago. We reviewed those. Again, we had a conversation last Friday with, with Tom and Rick and Matt to go through some of the comments. I'll go through them. I think we're, we're satisfied. Again, I think with the exception of, of just the grading behind lots 10 and 11. But I'll, I'll just go through some of the comments.
Maybe go through the ones that need waivers as well, Bill.
Yep, yep. So the right-of-way width, and again, I think the intent is that the, the main road, the cul-de-sac will eventually be petitioned to accept it as a public way. I think there's a 50-foot right-of-way proposed. And I believe they'll need a waiver after that. I believe it should be by regulation 60 feet. Similarly, the length of the cul-de-sac is about 1,900 feet, which exceeds the, the maximum allowed by, by the town's regulations. So there will be a waiver for that as well. Now, there's a few other waivers I'll note as, as we go through. A couple of new comments. We did ask for turning templates for emergency vehicles to make sure that they could circulate through the, the development satisfactorily. We got that information from, from Green International from Bill Scully. We've reviewed it and, and we're satisfied that it, that it works. We also got a, a site triangle plan, a site distance plan for the intersection at, at Lawrence Street. And again, the, the site distance exceeds what's required for the, the 85th percentile speed, which is about 36 miles an hour. There is some clearing that's, that's required to, to make that site triangle work. It looks like all the clearing is either on the, the applicant's property or within the right-of-way. But what I would suggest is that, that site triangle plan become part of the, the plan set so that there's a record of, excuse me, the area that, that has to be cleared to maintain that site triangle. Again, part of our comments concerned earthwork, material brought onto or taken off of the site, number of truck trips required. And again, we, we were able to discuss this with Tom last Friday. I, I think he's ready to put together a construction management plan that will address a lot of those issues. So I think once, once that plan is submitted, we can take a look at it and make, make any comments on that. And then most of the other comments concerned the, the stormwater management system. There's an infiltration basin proposed to, to mitigate any impacts from the additional impervious area. We had reviewed it previously. We had reviewed soil conditions, subsurface conditions, also as part of the previous development. And, and were satisfied that, that what was being proposed would mitigate any increases neither the rate of runoff or volume of runoff off the site. We had a couple of technical comments that we asked to be addressed concerning calculation of removal of total suspended solids and also how the time of concentration was calculated for one of the, excuse me, existing watersheds. Rick provided some additional information yesterday, I believe, on that. We were able to review it. We're satisfied now that both, both of those calculations are correct and that actually none of them had any significant impact on the, the design of the infiltration system. So again, I think we're, we're satisfied with that. And I think really the, the last remaining comment is, is the grading behind the lots 10 and 11. I think that we did receive a revised plan late this afternoon. We haven't been able to look at it. But I'll, I'll just go through some of our concerns. There's a very steep slope behind those, those two proposed houses. I think it's probably in the range of 40 to 50 feet high. It's been proposed at, at a slope of, of two to one. And, and to mitigate that, that slope, the previous proposal had been a, a series of retaining walls stepped back. As we reviewed it, we found some inconsistencies in, in how that was working and whether it, it would work. We discussed those with, with Tom, Rick, and Matt on Friday. And I think they've, they've looked at some, some ideas on maybe how to approach that differently. So I think it might be better for, for Rick or Tom or Matt maybe to, to go through some of those revisions and, and give the board an idea of, of what they're looking at. But beyond that, I, I think, I think we're satisfied that, that they've addressed all of our comments regarding the, the civil site in stormwater.
Thank you, Bill. Before we, we go to Rick, Rick Gudrow, does anybody have any questions for Bill with regard to the civil?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question on the, the 1,900-foot cul-de-sac. I know there'd be a waiver request for that. Might it mitigate the issue if the applicant were to consider granting an easement of the proposed roadway for the condo association? So there's always an open kind of a loop there. I know we're gonna have a homeowners association and a condo to different developments. But it seems like a natural way to, to alleviate or mitigate a very long dead end.
Tom, do you want to tackle that?
Yes, there'll be a, an easement. People will be able to drive through the condominium. It does loop back around. That will be open, you know, as a public access to go through there. So I, I don't have a problem with that if that's what, what's being asked here.
Any other questions for, with regard to the site work? Okay. At this time, I think John, I was wondering, but I think you want to call Rich Gudrow for some items, is that correct?
That's correct.
Welcome, Rich. How are you?
I'm doing well, thank you. How are you?
Doing well. Floor's yours.
All right, Amy, any chance you could put up the buring that we just sent you?
Yep, but just sent me like at just, right? What, 6 o'clock?
Sorry, I'm, I'm having trouble hearing you.
Yeah, there's a lot of people. Is everybody getting echo?
Yeah.
Can we try everybody who's not on mute? So, um, yeah, Rick, as long as we sent it earlier, I saved it, and Rich is actually controlling the documents.
Which one, Rick? Which one are you looking for, Rick?
The one that was sent today. Here you go, lot 8 through 12 wall grading, the top one.
Okay.
If you could scan up to, to Lot 8 area. So a little background on this section of the lot. This is current, this area is currently the slope from the easterly property line located here. And then there was basically a 60 to 75 foot or so cut made on, and that created that slope when the gravel operation was in place. That slope currently is approximately 2.2 to 1. Does vary. Some areas are approximately one and a half, up steep, as steep as one and a half to 1 at, at about the steepest area that we observed. So previously, as Bill had mentioned, we were proposing four or five retaining walls in various areas. Some retaining walls located just to the rear of the proposed houses. Some retaining walls located to the front of the houses, which predominantly are remaining. And the retaining walls that were proposed were to be approximately four feet in height, staggered with approximately a five-foot planting strip. And some concerns were brought about from both the grading accessibility and ability to maintain the plantings on those stepped walls that were proposed. So that's a little history as to what, what was the driving force to reevaluate this area. So basically, what we've done is we've looked at where the 230-foot contour was relative to the property line. And at that point, we proposed to install a retaining wall with a height of approximately eight feet. So a top of wall elevation of 230 and a bottom of wall elevation of 222. As you can see, as you head to the south in this area, the grade of the site is, is decreasing, so therefore the wall is changing in both the top and bottom elevation. But from this point heading north, it, it pretty much remains to that elevation until it reaches the other end of the wall. If you could, Rich, pan up a little bit to the top, thank you. So, you know, right in here, we have an elevation 250 high point, I believe it's 253. Again, down into a Again, down into a 175 grade at the gravel pit floor. So over 75, approximately 78 feet in elevation change that currently exists. And obviously we're trying to, to create a situation where we can, excuse me, utilize some retaining walls and some vegetative measures, which Matt Murva will describe in, in a little greater detail to, to plant these areas. And then also create some usable spaces, some backyard areas that are relatively flat. Excuse me, swell out some, some of the runoff water, you know, to the north and to the south. But create a relatively flat backyard area. And those backyard areas approximate 25 feet. Lot 11, we've proposed to install approximately a four-foot-high retaining wall in this area here to provide for that level area. And what we've also done is we've looked at the positions of the houses, the driveways and how the grading was working. Though for instance, on lot 11, we relocated the, the house a little closer to the street. And we changed the garage to a front-load garage as opposed to a side-load garage, which allows us to take advantage of this area here for, for some additional sloping, which ultimately minimized the wall height. And then in this area here, as you get, you know, 150 feet or so off of the cul-de-sac, this is where some of those steep grades, the one and a half, one grades that I was referring to actually exist. So what the applicant has suggested, and we've prepared the plan depicting that that area be graded at a one and a half to one slope. And that area would be covered with riprap for stabilization of that slope. Again, we've had discussions with Matt Murva, the landscape architect for the project. And he's going to talk to you about some plantings that, that could be installed along the front face of that to help, to help with the visibility of that area being softened with the vegetation installation being proposed. So that's the highlight of, you know, what we've been working on the last few days to try and come up with an alternative to the, the items that were discussed last Friday and the concerns that were raised. I, I would like to say that in, in certain areas such as this area here, you can see the contour intervals are a little wider apart. Those are proposed to be three-to-one slopes. That could be a usable area. Transitioning from the, you know, flat side yard area here down that three-to-one slope. That could be planted with a conventional lawn, maintained landscaping, whatever the property owner chose to do with that area. And then that transitions down into the driveway area. So subtle changes were made, elevations of foundations were raised, driveways were raised, driveways were regraded. To try and, you know, accommodate for smaller retaining wall systems to be, to be required. And the relocation of the retaining wall, and as I said, the houses have all kind of come together into, into this draft of the plan that we have, we've put together. Have the board have the opportunity to review, have Bill McGrath, who, as he had said earlier, plan came out this afternoon, so he has not had an opportunity to really go through it. But it was intended to be for discussion every purposes as to what we're proposing to address those comments.
And just to, just to chime in on that a little bit in terms of landscape. One of the things we talked about with, with Bill and Scott Ritter from Beta last week on Friday was the, the nature of the retaining walls, the way we had them before. If you scroll down, Rich, if you don't mind, to lot 10. You know, we had a series of stepped retaining walls starting at about where that 200 contour is closest to lot 10. And in interval of, as, as Rick mentioned, four or five walls that, that stepped up and had proposed landscape, shrubbery, grasses and, and things at each level. And one of the concerns was just, how's that going to get maintained? Who's going to handle that? And, and what do we need to do to keep people from, from going on, on top of all those walls? The, the solution that you're looking at here is really kind of consolidating all of that wall because we still need retaining wall essentially into the one retaining wall that you see as the thick black line, which would kind of be halfway up the slope. And then there's two-to-one slope above it and two-to-one slope below it. And that would be seeded with a, like a slope mix, wildflower mix that we're using on, on other slopes on the site. And basically would be left unmaintained. That would be an area that would grow up as a wildflower meadow. And ultimately, the forest that's at the top of the hill would start to creep down the hill into this area and succession would, would take over essentially. So the maintained area of everybody's yard would be the three-to-one slopes that you're seeing that are more gentle down around the houses themselves. But from that 200 contour up essentially, would you just eventually, you'd be looking into a grass. No maintenance would be required on that by the homeowners. And then that retaining wall would be up the hill a bit. We'd have a fence on top of that wall to protect anybody from coming over the wall for any reason or, or any fall protection from, from the top of that wall. But essentially just letting this area go back to a natural knoll, basically hillside over time. So we're trying to simplify things here, still provide for some maintained lawn area in these backyards. But also make, make it less of a maintenance situation for the HOA or the individual homeowners down the road. So the landscape plans have not quite caught up to this grading scheme yet. We, we definitely wanted to get it in front of you, talk it through with Beta. Make sure we're, we're on the same page, gather any feedback, and then we can, we can update the landscape plan accordingly. If, if you slide back up, if you don't mind, to that riprap area. This, we would intend to screen the, the toe of that slope with evergreen plantings with, with pines and spruce. So that as you're looking out of the house on lot 12, that's buffering your view of that slope. And those would be fast-growing evergreens that would really start to hide that slope over time and grow in. Obviously, that's something Tom's taking into consideration in terms of providing the best possible lot for lot 12. We could make that slope shallower and provide less sort of green level backyard for lot 12. But the, the trade-off that we're looking at here is providing more level area and tightening that slope into a more confined space so that there is more usable yard for, for lot 12. So that's the, that's the current thinking here in the, the scheme that we've, we've come up with kind of in response to discussions with, with Beta late last week. We, we appreciate them walking through it with us and certainly welcome feedback tonight.
Excellent. Rick, do you want to go through some of the other items you had? I think you had the sidewalk, the bus stop and a few other things. And I think Devin had some concerns with the water infrastructure. Anybody to talk about that?
Sure. So the cul-de-sac sidewalk is proposed to traverse the easterly side of the roadway, travel around to the lot 15 driveway. So Amy, maybe if you could go to the site plans at the plan set from the 23rd of April. So the next page, I believe it's the fourth page we're looking at. There you go. So that sidewalk will traverse around the cul-de-sac and continue to the driveway of lot 15 where it will terminate at that point. So we believe that addressed the concern about the cul-de-sac sidewalk. Would also like to note that we've added a, an island to the center of the cul-de-sac as had been requested. And that would be vertical granite curving for that island. Some other points that, that I wanted to hit on. If you could scan up so we could look at the condominium area a little bit. There you go. So there were 20 parked, there are currently 20 parking spaces for vehicle parking within the condominium area. You can actually see five spaces located here, in this area here, five more spaces located here. If you pan to the north of the page. See there. There's two spaces proposed in this location here for this cluster of units. And then if we could, excuse me, go to page three. Okay, there's three spaces proposed here and five additional spaces proposed here. So those are all within the condominium area. As Bill had mentioned, each unit has a garage or two. Two-space garage or one-space garage, additional parking is provided in the driveways for all of those units. Houses all have garages for vehicles and driveways that can handle a minimum of two vehicles on all the individual house lots. If you could go back to page two, just to the south of lot 17.
Went too far, right?
Yeah. Yeah, it seems like it's. There's good. So there are also three spaces proposed here. And initial, initially we had proposed for the school bus stop to be positioned here. You can see the end of the walkway system here and here that goes through the condominium area to provide access to that. We have received comments and response from the Homes Bus Company representatives. They've been looking at this to see if it would be feasible to locate the bus stop in that location. And we've just got word that their preferred location would actually be at the intersection of Lawrence Street and the site road that they don't typically come into the developments. And that would be their policy going forward for this project as well. Matt Murva will discuss some details of the proposed bus location and the shelter. But basically we're proposing to construct a shelter at the intersection of Road A and Lawrence Street for the school bus. Basically in this area right here. Matt's working on that. We can get you some details on that. I think Matt is prepared to talk conceptually about what that, what that school bus shelter would consist of. But I would like to continue along if I may. There were some concerns and comments brought about for various fire hydrant locations. Fire hydrant in the condominium was relocated approximately 10 feet to the high point as requested. That's in this area.
Did I go too far?
Yeah, if you could just pan down. So that hydrant is now located right here just to the north of the driveway to units 37 and 38. Additionally, if you could go to the Lawrence Street sidewalk plans, which I believe are sheets five and six. There you go. So if you could go to the east, Rich, in this direction down here. So we've proposed for water main provisions across Lawrence Street. Gate valves to be installed at each location at Cranberry Meadow. And if you can continue to the south along Lawrence Street. That's also proposed at the other, the two other roadways that we cross, Brett's Farm Road and Eagle Drive. Again, two shut-off gate valves are proposed as well as a stub. Also in front of lot 51 is requested, suggested by one of the butters. We've relocated the hydrant location to approximately 20 feet from the existing pole. And Rich, if you can now go to the next sheet. I had discussions with Al Finney from the water department. We've proposed three-way gate be installed here with a stub to Brett's Farm Road, stub into the site development, the stub on the main service on Lawrence Street. And then the fire line connection is now being made and a hydrant located here as opposed to the previous hydrant location here. And then as requested, basically a six-foot length of pipe with a cap and a thrust block at the end is what the water department had, had requested that we do. They did not feel it necessary for a gate to be installed at that location.
Rick, can I ask you a quick question?
You are.
Why did you install the gate valve before that cross connection? As opposed to afterwards, just that way if, if that main was ever extended, then you wouldn't have to shut down the development for any future water extension.
In this location here, Devin?
Yes. So see how that gate valves before that cross connection?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, so if that was after the connection, then you wouldn't have to shut down the development.
I agree. That, that was the preferred layout of the water department.
Okay.
So we, as I said, we went over that with Al Finney from the water department. We had previously extended that line down. We had the hydrant here. There were concerns about flushing of the line and the gate installation here. So we've basically put this together as we've gone over it with the water department.
Okay.
All right. So I, I think those were the main items that I wanted to discuss. And I guess I can turn it over unless there's any questions with respect to those items. I could turn it over to Matt to discuss the bus stop structure.
Any questions for Rick on these, on the items he just described? Okay. Matt, it's all yours.
Sure. So the bus stop structure, as Rick mentioned, the bus folks wanted it to be closer to Lawrence Street. And we're, we're going to find a way to make it look contextual with Lawrence Street. One of the things we're thinking about is having the base of it be kind of a Pennsylvania fieldstone wall, similar to the existing wall work that's across the street on Lawrence Street at Brett's Farm. Where that would be the base and then some kind of roof structure would, would be on top of that base with some granite benches inside and just make it look more like an entry feature than a sort of traditional city bus stop, if you will. So that's something we'll, we'll provide more detail on, but that's, that's kind of the current thinking right now. And Tom and I will go through that more and, and provide. And Tom and I will go through that uh more and and provide additional detail um for you to have a look at.
Okay. Did you want to um, were you going to elaborate at all more on the retaining walls or are you all set with that waiting beta to review it, correct?
Uh, the retaining walls that that we were discussing with Rick uh further to the the north there. The uh, I think the material on that was going to be the um the ready rock uh material similar to what we used at um eighteen Union. Um, just without the stain on it, but but same block material. Uh, we provided an image of it in the updated landscape package. Um. And I can show you that if you wouldn't mind going to that. That package. Uh, just ignore the old wall locations because those are being simplified. We're still showing the uh multiple tiered walls on this this cross section. Uh, but if you go to page uh six of this set. So the the wall material you see right there is is what we'd be proposing, but this would be uh more of an eight-foot uh wall and it would be further up the slope. Um. I don't know if I can control the screen here. How were you doing that, Rick?
I was just using my mouse pad to move the cursor.
Okay. All right, I don't think I have control, but essentially uh that would be the wall material and instead of the series of four or five walls you see down by lot ten, we're talking about further up the slope. Uh, so you'd be seeing that you'd be seeing slope first and then the wall uh and then slope beyond that wall.
Okay.
So this will will update the cross section as well.
All right, great. All right. Any um, any questions for Matt with regard to the bus stop or the uh, I mean, I think we're gonna wait for uh Bill to give us a update on the slopes, but any other questions for Matt at this time with regard to those two areas? Okay, thanks, Matt.
Great, thank you.
All right, um, I'll turn it back over to John Smolak then at this time. Hi, John.
Back on, thank you. Um. I think that uh at this point, uh, we're looking at uh outstanding items that remain to be um managed, one of which is the construction management plan. Uh, the other item is an update on the waivers list and we just wanted to hold off on adjusting those waivers until we had the final plan set uh complete. I think we've uh matched some of the adjustments that need to be made and uh the bus, the school bus shelter uh uh plans that would also need to be adjusted uh and and provided to the board. Um. In addition to um, I guess the 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 treatment of the retaining walls and and the grading. And uh, we feel pretty confident that we can get this material, set of materials uh to beta and the board by uh a week from Friday, the fifteenth. And that would hopefully give everyone ample time to review for a uh June third meeting. Um. And that is all I had, other than the fact that we have submitted a uh request for a continuance and the extension of the hundred eighty-day um period um that we're again filed with the board, we're waiting for the board's determination on those items as to their desire in terms of uh the next uh hearing. That's all I have.
Dan, do you want to uh weigh in?
Yeah, I I think we're at a point where we can start looking at waivers at the next meeting. Um, I think I need to revise waiver list from John. Um, but it it seems like that most of the peer review comments have been addressed at this point, so.
Okay, go ahead. Go go ahead, Tom. I see you with your hand up.
Yeah, just a a question if I could ask the board. It would help um, I think, guide Bader and guide Rick and Matt Mervis. Um, the slope that's there now existing is one to, you know, one point five, one to two. And um, you know, we're integrating walls and we're trying to make a uh, you know, a two-to-one slope with it. Um, vegetate it, and that was similar to what was actually accepted in the other Abbeyville proposals um before. Uh, the the bylaws actually state for a three-to-one slope, and I was wondering is the, would the board be against granting a waiver to go to two-to-one? Um, actually, it helps out in a lot of different ways. I mean, it uh, it's not increasing the steepness of the slope that's already there. It actually would help um reduce the amount of imported fill if we have to to go to three-to-one. Um, so there's less trucking with that uh to bring material into the site. And um, you know, if the neighbors or the people actually have moved in there, some they did want to do something uh in their backyard. They have about a twenty-five-foot backyard with a two-to-one slope. They'd have less with a three-to-one slope. Um, if they didn't want to create more of a backyard, they could do a little bit of a, like a four-foot wall or something themselves. Gives them a little bit of flexibility and they'd be less work if they did want to do something. A three-to-one slope really doesn't give them really any usable backyard at all. So I was just wondering if the if the board um it would just help us, I know, with Bader and and the engineers and the landscaping if um maybe we had a little guidance from the board on that.
Bill, do you want to make any initial comment before um discuss it or no?
Uh, uh, yeah, so um, as as Tom mentioned, the the town's requirement is a a three-to-one slope. Um. I think other other projects in town have used two-to-one slopes. Uh, I think the key uh is is stabilizing it. Uh, I think Matt mentioned earlier that it it wouldn't be a owned and seeded slope. It would be a slope that would vegetate and wouldn't need maintenance. So uh, we don't necessarily object to two-to-one. I think just the key is um stabilizing it both long-term uh but also in the short term during construction until the vegetation establishes itself. Uh, because it it is right uphill from backyards and and houses, so uh, the last thing I think anybody wants is a a washout on that slope that that goes down into the the yards and the the foundations.
Yeah, that would be that would be staked with jute mat and seeded and, you know, stabilized prior to the seeding taking root, but the uh the seeding and the vegetation would be what ultimately stabilizes that slope as well.
Right. Um, I'm I'll open it up to the board. I don't have a, I don't have a problem with it. I think I'd like to see the larger backyard. And as long as the uh the slope was prepared properly to avoid, as Bill said, having a washout in the backyard, I think, uh, and if we've used it before in town, I think uh there's some precedent. Um, I'll open it up to the board. Uh, Devin, do you have any concerns?
Uh, so my only concern would be that I think for a slope of that size, just want that to be prepared by a structural engineer. That that would be my only concern.
No. I think, Dan, uh, Tom, you would have, you would have planned on doing that anyways, I don't think, correct?
Uh, structural engineer would be designing the wall and uh would probably have input on the base or foundation of that wall. Um, that would be on that as well, so would have to meet some type of structural integrity for that. As far as the slopes go, um I I haven't had a structural engineer look at a slope before. Usually, um you know, uh, more of a civil design with that. Um, Rick or Matt would comment on that? Is it like more of a civil engineer, isn't it?
That's that's typically how I've seen it. Um, Devin, if you have some kind of detail that you've seen for it that that you'd like to share, we're we're glad to take a look and and see what it requires from a design standpoint, but um you know, two-to-one slope while it might not be mowable uh all the time is is certainly um something that's that we're using often in designs without without really having to have a a structural engineer um involved. I don't know if that's your experience too, Rick, but that's been that's been mine. Even even one-to-one slopes with riprap. Um, I've seen designed by civil engineers when when it gets more into more vertical than one-to-one, um you know, is when I've seen uh structural get involved.
Well, we're we're talking a two-to-one grass slope, right?
We are, yeah.
Projects that I've I've recently been a part of, I mean, we've started to include structural engineers on. And this is a pretty large, you know, height diff- height differential. I just you know. Uh, I think I'd feel more comfortable. I don't know if, Bill, you have something to add to this? Uh, just want to make sure it's done right.
Yeah, no, no, I agree. Um, I would say where we've usually gotten uh structural input on slopes is where there's some kind of a a geotechnical issue. Uh, if there's a groundwater issue that's apparent that it might cause some destabilization of it, um, things like that. Uh, I guess I would say let us look at what's been proposed uh with the wall um and how all that works. And then maybe we can weigh in on on whether we think there needs to be some uh structural design of the slope as well. Certainly, the wall needs structural design. Um. There's the wall and the the footing system are going to be very important to making sure that that's stable. And the wall is going to play into the stability of the slope as well.
Thanks, Bill. Jim, any concerns with the uh the slope of a two-to-one in the backyard there?
Uh, oh, like I say, not not necessarily. Um. It it needs to be constructed and stabilized correctly. Uh, but like I say, let us take a look at the plan. Uh, and then maybe we can weigh in on on whether we think uh some structural input might be appropriate for the slope as well as the wall. Like I said, we we have done it um when certain geotechnical conditions we think dictate that. But uh, I think once we take a look at it, we can make a recommendation on that.
All right. Any concerns or any problems with that from other members of the board?
None for me.
Mike? Jim?
Uh, no, I I'm I'm comfortable. Uh, Bill sounds confident that it can be designed properly, so uh the two-to-one slope sounds fine.
Okay, okay. Josie, any problem?
No, I don't see any problem, Chris.
All right. So I think you've got some marching orders there, Tom. It looks like you're uh, you're okay to proceed with uh presenting that to Bill.
Thank you.
Good. Good. All right, so I think what we have next is you're gonna uh, you're gonna put together a construction management plan for beta to review. Um, Dan, you're gonna get over a list of updated waivers. And uh, are you gonna start working on conditions too, Dan, do you think?
Yeah, I can. I I think I'd like to get from John a an updated list of waivers. Um. And as soon as I get that, I can do the conditions.
Okay. And uh, and then the obviously the the uh, when do you think you're gonna have the, or you think it's the fifteenth, you're gonna have the retention wall plan to, we actually have the retention wall plan already to Bill, correct? Tom?
Uh, the retention one. I'm I'm sorry, the retention wall plan?
The new one, yeah, that's already been submitted to Bill. Yeah, I'm sorry, up wall, calling it a retention wall, I apologize. The slope behind behind ten and eleven.
Oh, that we ta- the retaining wall, yes, that was just submitted to to Bill tonight. He hasn't had a chance to look at it.
Okay, all right. Good. Um, uh, at this time, like, any other questions from the Ford before we open it up to anybody in the public? It's not Amy. Do you have anybody with any?
Uh, yep. Nastro?
Yeah, hi, it's Karen Cave. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I am, I have a question on the traffic study. I have a few questions, but first the traffic study about um, how does the ZBA reconcile the traffic of peak hours? As it was notated that the peak hours rarely aren't peak hours. They're like seventeen, seven fifteen to eight fifteen AM. They do not capture elementary school traffic. It's too early. In the KP traffic, it's too late. And at that time, there's no trains to Boston from the Norfolk station. So they pick the time that's pretty much a dead time in Norfolk because there's no trains and no school other than the few people that live in the neighborhood. You know, there's no um, might be going to work at that time that's driving to work. So it although it's very difficult at this time with traffic, um you know, with data collection and stuff, maybe we could look at better you know, ti- even maybe they collected data and they could expand the timings that would look at, you know, a normal train schedule and our school schedule.
Um, is Bill Scully on the line or is he?
Bill Scully's here.
I am. So um um, I have to see what she was referring to the time, but uh um. So when we, when we collect our traffic data for the analysis anyways, we we do the manual counts between seven AM and nine AM. And uh later in the afternoon. Uh, they typically, because this is a residential project, we pick the peak commuter times to get our data. So I I'm not sure what she's referring to, seven fifteen to eight fifteen specifically, but we collect all our data during that two-hour period manually, um, so we can get all the turning movements and all that. And then within that two-hour period, we select the peak sixty minutes where the total intersection volume uh peaks. And and we'll take the peak volume at each of those locations that we count. And uh, and that's what we base the analysis on. Um, so we try to identify the actual peak number of actual vehicles we count. Um. And they you know, they typically are going to, in the morning, they will overlap with with commuters, uh, people going to the trains, people going to and from school. We'll have all that data in in that seven to nine period, and then we select the peak um, peak total to base our analysis on, to present a worst case. We have the machine out on Lawrence Street that also collects data and we look at that and uh and while we base our analysis on the manual uh turning movement count, you know, we see the machine count also provides us some confirmation or verification besides speed data uh for that. So the peak volume on Lawrence Street probably the last five years that I've been working out there, you know, we're always in that uh you know, fifty-five to seventy vehicles per hour in the peak times. Depending on time, you know, afternoon or morning. Uh, the direction of flow changes a bit, but uh we're still in that that number. So we're pretty I mean, we're confident. We did updated counts um for this update. Uh, we've done counts since twenty fifteen out there on every end multiple times. So we we feel pretty comfortable. And I think uh, if Bill wants to say anything, I mean, Beta's reviewed, reviewed the data, reviewed our um forecasts and any adjustments to that information, and uh, I think they feel pretty comfortable with it as well.
Thanks, Bill. Yeah, so we have reviewed the data and and typically the peak hour is is not something that's guessed at. Um, I think as Bill mentioned, they did a put a tube out there for twenty-four hours to collect the data hour by hour or even by every fifteen-minute interval. So they can see where that peak hour falls. Unfortunately, uh, it's not a good time to to go back out and and do counts because of the uh the reduction in traffic, uh, but I think the data that we've reviewed, we're we're confident that that the peak hour has been identified correctly.
Thanks, Bill. Karen, you had another question or a couple of other questions?
I did. It was um about the cut and fill. At first, we were informed that this is a level site. And we still wanted to know cut and fill because it could be, you know, fifty thousand cubic yards out and fifty thousand rock in or whatever, right? But um, we haven't seen the cut and fill and then even recently on recent information even mentioned by the applicant tonight, it shows um about twenty-three, twenty-four thousand yards of fill being brought in. Um, we don't have any cut and fill, as you are aware from previously, we've gone through a lot of cut and fill in um trucks. in, um, trucks and dust. And a lot of that is a high concern of all the neighbors and we're a bit extra sensitive on that. We have not seen the cut and fill. You may have it. We, I, I just didn't find it on the, on the website. And I think Amy's been pretty diligent in uploading the website with all those items.
If, if I could respond, um, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
That's correct. It's not been finalized yet because we're still working on the slopes behind lots ten, eleven and twelve. At the, uh, past meeting, I think we were in the, the mid twenty thousand range of import. Um, once we know for sure what our final grading will be, uh, we will do that, we will do that calculation and it will be in the construction management plan. Um, we're also looking that we'll be generating fill on site between foundations and, and other, um, um, utilities and things as we install it. And we feel as though that number will probably drop. But once again, it's all gonna depend on the sloping and what we do behind those three or four lots there on the right-hand side. And, uh, we will get that to you as soon as, as we can. But we're not expecting a, a drastic change from what we, we stated at the prior meeting.
Okay. Go ahead, Karen.
Yep, I am. As many of the, this, you're going to more than probably triple our population on this side of the bridge with the amount of houses. And, um, many residents walk down to the, the, the pond. And, um, right now, there's no, there's no sidewalk. There's going to be additional seven hundred cars added a day. And, you know, onto Lawrence Street and, um, plus three times as much foot traffic onto Lawrence Street due to the amount of residents being added to this side of the bridge. And, um, the applicant is only putting a sidewalk on one side of his development and I, I still, even with a magnifying glass, can't seem to read the condo part because it's so small. So I'm not sure if there's one in the condo part or not. Could he utilize his, you know, because every, every, um, development requires a sidewalk on both sides of the street instead of requiring a sidewalk on both sides of the street, which he's already not doing. Could he put a sidewalk down Lawrence Street to get them, people from Abbeville down to the, um, down to the pond?
Do you want to address that?
Yes, um, it was mentioned in the last, uh, hearing that, um, it, we will not be proposing a sidewalk down, um, Lawrence Street with that. It, um, is, is something that is, is not going to be added for this project. It's a much reduced in size. When we had, um, two hundred and sixteen units that were going in there, we were willing to put the, the sidewalk in, but at this point in time, it's not contemplated to be part of the project.
And you, Joe, Tom, can you talk about the sidewalk inside the condominium park?
Yes, uh, most definitely. It's, um, the sidewalk is on the town accepted, um, well, the proposed town way, um, that will be there on the right-hand side. It goes down, loops around the cul-de-sac. And then there's a sidewalk that actually, um, wraps through the condominium area as well. And then we've put some trails in, as Matt Murva said, that, uh, actually opens up to the open space and a couple of, uh, other areas throughout the condominium as well.
Okay. Karen?
Yep. Another one is about, um, lot one. It has a driveway really close to Lawrence Street. Plus, on this call, I heard there was going to be a bus stop also added onto, you know, Lawrence and Road A. And, um, I, I would, I would assume it's still on lot, it would be on lot one side due to the wetlands on the other side of, uh, Road A. I, I would think that you'd want to consider swapping the house and where the driveway would be, um, due to the proximity of a driveway to people turning from Lawrence Street onto Road A. And also now possibly a bus stop somewhere on there. I, I assume it's not their lot, but on the corner in, um, with the driveway really close by. And although you put benches, you know, kids don't usually sit very long, so they probably be playing and things near a bus stop. So, um, a car in a driveway is probably, you know, not the smartest idea to have. And I, I would think that it might be, it might be able to be swapped. I'm not sure where the driveway is versus, you know, on the other side of the house. But I'm not sure because that's also where the, um, electric lines are or the right of way for the electric lines or something, I believe.
Actually, if, if I could comment on that, that's a, that's a, a great point on things that you're bringing up, uh, Karen, that, um, something that Rick and I talked about actually just a couple of hours ago when we found out that the, uh, that the bus stop was gonna have to be at the end of Lawrence Street. And that is, um, shifting that driveway and flipping the house so the driveway is further down the street for safety. So that, that's a great point you're bringing up. And, and, uh, we, we talked about that literally like two hours ago when we found out the bus stop was gonna need to be required up at Lawrence Street.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, anything else, Karen?
I'm just still very concerned with blasting. But I understand, I'll wait for the construction management plan maybe to lay that out.
Okay. I think, um, Amy, I think Mike Judasey has his hand up.
Yep. Ken, go ahead, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mike Judasey. A couple of quick questions. One regarding, uh, actually both regarding Lawrence Street. There was no discussion about what the plan is for paving Lawrence Street after the water main gets put in. I had mentioned at the last hearing, you know, a good section of Lawrence Street is not in good shape. And, um, at least in my view, a trench patch on the water main, uh, trench is not going to be satisfactory.
Do you want to address that?
Whether it's part of this project or in concert with the town paving project, you know, we just, Lawrence Street's gonna need to be paved after the water main goes out. Just wanted to see what the plan is for that. And I have a follow-up as well. Thank you.
Okay.
If I could, some things. Yeah, Mike, uh, we actually, we, we tried to coordinate with the, uh, DPW on some things, but our intent is to come on the side of the road, not to be in the road when we bring the water main up. So that would limit, um, the amount of disturbance that we, we do with the asphalt. Uh, there are a couple of areas there that probably will need some repair and, um, we will, uh, we'll coordinate with the DPW with that, but as our intent is to be on the side of the road and, and not be in the road.
Uh, before, Mike, before you continue, Tom, and I know, you know, John had mentioned earlier, do you want to update? Up, uh, update the board on the water department and the water main and the gates? Or did, uh, John, did you feel you handled that earlier sufficiently? The update on the gates, installing the gates on those streets. I know John had said he had an update maybe on that. I don't know if he wanted to talk about that right now.
I, I can update that is, um, basically there's been conversations with, um, myself and the, uh, the DPW. They have a new DPW director right now. So I, I feel, you know, just trying to understand that what's going on with everything in town. So, um, you know, we, we're looking to catch up soon with that. But, um, basically if, uh, if the town was willing to supply the gates and tea, um, we would actually install all those and, and run a pipe, you know, across to feed, uh, the three develop, the three development roads that are on the opposite side of the street. With that, we're also gonna be putting in hydrants, um, at our own expense all the way up the street with this, uh, too. So basically if the, the town can, can purchase those, those few things, we're more than willing to, uh, provide the labor and, um, and put, and put those in and install them. The town also was, um, looking at a couple of other things, um, that they were discussing internally, uh, the DPW. And then they were gonna get back to us. I, I wish I could tell you more, but that's all I can, I can state at this time.
Okay. Mike, you had a follow-up question. Uh, go ahead.
Yes, I did. And I apologize. I missed the first part of Mr. DePlasse's response, but that's okay. Um, so on a related matter, um, and again, I appreciate you working with the town and putting the three stubs in for the three streets. I think that's a benefit for the residents and that's appreciated. On a similar vein, there are about a dozen houses that, um, that abut Lawrence Street between, uh, Cranberry Meadow and the new project. So again, in this, in the vein of not wanting to dig the road up in the future, is there any plan or could there be discussions with the town for putting in service connections, at least to the property lines for each of those properties along the way? So that A, the town could potentially get some more customers into the water system. Uh, and B, if anyone had an issue with their well and then, you know, in their future, they'd have the ability to connect. Um, and the town wouldn't have to dig up the road to get access into the water main.
That, that was one of the topics of, uh, that they, that they were, were discussing internally too on that, uh, mic. So once again, I'm waiting to hear from them on that as well. I'm more than willing to cooperate with the town, um, you know, but, but how that all comes together, um, still waiting to talk to them about it.
Yeah, Mike, I, I had talked to Blair Crane today and they're, they're just trying to, he's trying to wrap his head around, you know, the pipe size, the amount of piping, uh, just do their, plan, doing a little bit of cost analysis on what makes sense for the DPW. And, uh, they, they informed me today that he's gonna get back to Mr. DePlasse though. And hopefully they can, uh, they can work this out. But, uh, I think we'll also make sure, I'm sure Tom will, will mention that to him as well with regard to those stubs at those twelve residences.
Great. Thank you very much.
Amy, do you have any other hands raised? David Mastro, I see.
Yep, there we go. Go ahead.
Yeah, it's Karen. Yeah, I have a question. It's not my computer. My computer's getting upgraded, so.
Use his?
He let me use his tonight. So, um, so, yeah, so, um, this, this lot, so, some of it, especially, um, the condominiums back up to a few abutters that's in Franklin. Have the Franklin residents been given, or when will they be given information about this? Um, because I, I would think at this point, they may be, especially one of the houses, which is a very nice house on the street. There's, I mean, it really will impact them and in their quality of life over the next however many years. We're not even sure how long this will take to build. How do, like, how do we handle out of town, you know, different town residents finding out about this?
I'll leave that to either Tom or John.
Well, any, any resident that was within, um, a butters notification was, was notified and, uh, of the hearings and when they commenced. And after that, it would be their responsibility to follow up. Um, you know, when they're advertised, posted, and if they want to attend, they can, or, um, if they want to make comment, they can. But that would be up to them to, to follow up on it from when they were notified with everything. I will say that, um, we did some significant, um, adjustments from what we originally looked at to create some nice buffers from the, um, I'm not, is it Camden Way? I think it is from, uh, the last house in, in Camden Way there. Rick could probably talk about that a little bit, but we did create a nice buffer, um, much more so than what was originally, um, planned on the submission back uh, in December.
Karen, any other, uh, concerns?
No.
Okay, thank you. Karen, did you get a, did you get a chance to look at the, uh, the neighborhood letter that Tom filled out and sent back? I don't know if you had a chance yet to. I think it only came out earlier yesterday or today.
I did not, no.
All right. Did you, and you, that, that is up on the.
We didn't have internet yesterday on this side of the bridge.
Okay, all right.
They took Comcast out because they were putting it under the bridge and Verizon was out. So nobody on this side of the bridge had internet yesterday.
It, I think it was actually later this afternoon. Right, Tom, that came this evening.
All right. Hey, just take a look at it, Karen. I know, uh, that was a concern that being done and it, uh, it looks pretty comprehensive. And obviously your, your point on the, uh, construction management plan will obviously be addressed. Right. Um, seeing that there's no other questions, um, anything else from the board? If not, I'll turn it over to John and Tom again if they have any concluding comments.
Chris, can I ask one question? This is Joe.
You're Joe.
Yeah, to Karen's point about the sidewalks, I know we've discussed it and maybe not have answered all the questions, but are they getting a waiver for any of the sidewalks within, it'll be a town accepted road at some point? Is there a waiver for sidewalks only on one side versus two sides of the development? Being requested?
Tom?
Um, yes, that, that would be requested.
Okay. I'm just following up that the planning board, I understand, and this goes back to some old sidewalk discussions in town that have gone on quite a bit in the past. When there is a new development and a new roadway going in, sidewalk waivers, we're not having to do sidewalks on both sides, would get some contribution to sidewalks outside the development, hopefully adding connectivity to maybe some nearby neighborhoods. Overall, addressing one of the master plans we have here to make more connectivity between developments. So I just wonder if that's been fully vetted with at least the DPW. I know there's been changes in that group. Uh, or I know this is not the planning board reviewing this. So there's a question about that little bit of a gap in terms of getting a waiver, but yet what should be done if you do get that waiver? So I leave that on the table.
Yeah, Rich, why don't you address that since you're working with the planning board on the new, new cost of, uh, per linear foot of sidewalks?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. The, um, the planning boards with, in concert with the DPW department and myself, are putting together a new, a newer updated sidewalk policy for residential subdivisions. There's really two pieces of sidewalk requirements in, in the regulations. One is along in your property butts and existing right away, you, you have to put a sidewalk in. And then the second part, what Mr. Sebastian was talking about is when you, a new subdivision requires sidewalk. So this particular project falls in that secondary road classification, which would require two sidewalks both sides. Um, what the planning board is, is working on a policy, they'll be talking about next Tuesday night, is having options, uh, for developers when they come before the planning board for projects for sidewalks. The options are either to, um, provide sidewalk outside the development to increase connectivity from existing sidewalks to there. Second option would be to put money into a sidewalk fund, which has been going on in the past. The difference that with the, the previous policy is that now that we're a complete streets community, they want to take potentially some of that money to go for construction dollars to create more sidewalks um, throughout town. And then there's a third option, which is if there isn't sidewalks in the immediate area that would be connectable or feasible to connect to, um, the developer can choose to put sidewalks of equivalent amount of the waiver being requested somewhere else in town to provide overall sidewalk benefit. Equivalent amount. So if it's five hundred feet of sidewalk you're getting a waiver for, either make a contribution to the sidewalk fund or you construct sidewalk somewhere else to improve connectivity for sidewalks. They'd arrive at a dollar amount to what that cost would be per linear foot based on what it would cost the town to put in a sidewalk, brand new or repair, and blend it with what a private developer would cost. So the town would be higher because of prevailing wage. So they're gonna come up with a blended cost per linear foot if somebody was to choose the option of putting money into the sidewalk fund. Um, right now, the blended average is thirty dollars per linear foot. They haven't voted on it, but that's at least where the, the average is, um, falling between the two.
Thanks, Rick. Joe, does that help?
That helps. I just think with how that would apply to this project and at the time of this being, you know, finalized, what would be the sidewalk, you know, accepting the waiver for a sidewalk waiver, where would that go? Meaning the, the mitigation or whatever has to come up, come from it. Again, addressing some of the abutters concerns here.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, respond to that? Understand the, the concern here, um, but I just, you know, to provide some historical context, uh, Mr. DePlasse provided hundreds of thousands of dollars as part of the Mass Works project to upgrade that bridge. And so we think that would be more than enough to compensate for any type of sidewalk mitigation. So I think Tom, Tom or Mr. Plasse has provided significant mitigation already. And assistance to the town, both, uh, you know, both dollar contributions as well as engineering costs to expedite that Mass Works grant application resulting in the upgrade of the bridge. expedite that Mass Works grant application resulting in the upgrade of the bridge.
Yeah, and this is Joe again. I don't take away that that was something that was worked out before, so I again, the whole view of what has to be on the table. I just want to make sure that we are addressing the waiver and if that if that satisfies the waiver, that's great. It's just a matter of just seeing if we've covered all the bases here, that's all. And I like the fact that we are discussing sidewalks and what happens in these developments better than we have in the past because we've gotten some great connectivity out of these projects where a new development goes in, suddenly two neighborhoods are connected that weren't connected before. And I'm glad that Rich is updating us on the fact that the town is working hard at that. And how it applies here is obviously, you know, I'll leave that to Rich to help bridge any gap here. But thank you for taking the moment to discuss it.
Great. Other questions for the applicant or any other concerns by the board? Okay, at this time, I'd ask for a motion to continue the public hearing till June third at seven fifteen for the Preservate Abbey bill.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Devin, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, Bill, um all the Bills. Uh Tommy and John, we appreciate it, Matt, and we'll see you on the third, and uh we appreciate it, and Rick as well.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thanks, Dan, as well. We lost Dan. Night, Dan. You're under the weather, Dan. You're very quiet tonight.
I'm good.
Okay, good. All right. Next, we have uh, we've got some uh some to approve some minutes. We have one set of minutes of April twenty second. Has everyone had a chance to review those minutes yet? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion? Um let's uh, do we have a motion to approve the April twenty second minutes?
I make a motion that we approve the April twenty seventh, missed, April twenty seventh minutes, okay, as written.
The only thing I noted, Amy, was on page three of five, you have Attorney Hill clarifies that the fire chief concerned with knockboxes.
Yep.
Knockboxes is K-N-O-X. As opposed to.
You know, I gotta give Chris credit where credit is due. He finds something.
Yeah, I mean, if we're gonna talk about that, there's also on the first paragraph of page four, the word feedback could be spelled in a different way. The speed feedback sign?
Is it, is that like an alternative fact?
No, it just says feedback. So we'll get, you make money when you bypass it, right? And it was just, it was an underline in the first paragraph in the beginning of this. There was something missing that wasn't filled in yet?
Yes, yeah, that stuff I'll fill in. It's um people's name, the dates of plans and things like that. And I did not get to update that, but I will, but um won't change any of the content.
And then call me about any minutes I need to be signed, Amy. I could work it out. Whatever you need me to do, just call me and we we work it out, get it done.
Okay, sounds good. So did we also have April fifteenth minutes? I sent like last week or something, I think.
Yeah, I have, I I you sent that to us. Yeah, but we have to, let's finish approving these first.
Yeah.
We we have a motion, we had discussion. Do we have a uh, so do we have another follow-up motion to accept the minutes of April twenty second as amended?
I so move.
Yeah, and I second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, April fifteenth minutes. Can we have a, can we have a motion to approve the April fifteenth, two thousand twenty minutes?
Can I just, can I ask a question?
No.
No, I'm sorry. Just now, the condominium association is associated with Next Grid. Uh we call it the COA. Is that the official acronym for them? Or non-C, I see COA referenced, right?
I heard it mentioned at one time.
Right, I just want to make sure, we, when we say condominium association, is that their true name, if there's a legal name to them? The land that's owned for this whole project?
It should be Norfolk Town Center Condominium.
That's what I was thinking. I just wanted to know if we wanted to be a little more precise about that.
You probably should. It should be Norfolk Town Condom, Norfolk Town Center Condominium Trust is actually who is the owner.
Okay.
So if we can put that uh wherever it needs to be amended in that, that would be good.
Okay, yep.
And one last question. When we said that the the DPW, the DEP does not consider the site jurisdictional, and then it says the the any, the NHESP demand uh deemed the project a non-ta, a non, a non-take? I I just wasn't clear on that. Is it, could we just, do we recall what that, it ties, was in total, what that was in total?
I know that um natural heritage.
It's a no-take.
Seems it a a no-take or a take? Uh what did I say, non-take?
You said non-take.
Okay, it's a no-take.
Okay. All right, so there's nothing, they they have no jurisdiction over this, is what we're saying, right?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure we were correct in the way we were saying it, if that's, if that's right. No more questions?
Anybody else have anything else? So we have a, we have a motion to approve the April fifteenth minutes as amended.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, very good. That takes care of the minutes, Amy.
Yep.
I think uh I think it would be helpful, because we take a few minutes and we deliberate the uh the nets, the uh net grid special permit. Is everybody everybody confident in doing that right now, or are you exhausted, prefer to wait?
Didn't be fair to the applicant to do it now.
Yeah, I'm admittedly tired, but yeah, I think we should, it would be benefit to the applicant.
Sounds like they're ready. Okay. Uh Joe and Joe or John, do you still have some of the finding of facts from our last meeting?
Yeah, I'm looking up, I'm going back to look again.
Okay. You're doing that, Joe. Maybe I'll read the um the criteria worksheet while you're doing that.
Yes, please. Yes, please.
Right. Uses in harmony with the general purpose and ten of the bylaw, the proposed use is expressly allowed by special permit. The use is in appropriate location and is not detrimental to the neighborhood and does not significantly alter the character of the zoning district. The facilities are low impact with a minimum of human activity and noise and produces no detriment or offensive discharges. A visual buffer of evergreen trees will be planted to block the view of the installation to the abutting neighbors on Union Street. Adequate and appropriate facilities will provide for the proper operation of the proposed use. The site has been designed to adequately handle stormwater. No sewage, refuge, or other waste will be generated by the facility. Proposed use would not be detrimental or offensive to the adjoining zoning districts and neighboring properties due to the effects of lighting, odor, smoke, noise, sewage, refuge material, visual, or other nuisances. There is no lighting proposed as part of this project. The proposed solar array has no odors, produces no smoke, and noise is limited. There is no proposal source for this project. Vegetated buffer and and uh fencing has been provided to mitigate potential visual impacts to abutting properties. The proposed use would not cause undue traffic congestion in the immediate area. The proposed project will result in minimal traffic to the proposed site. Vehicle trips will be limited to routine maintenance. A proper site plan has been filed for approval with the planning board and the proper number of copies submitted with the application for a special to the zoning board of appeals. The proposed project has been submitted to and approved by the planning board. The use and or purpose is consistent with the nineteen ninety-two master plan and as most recently updated, and the proposal use is expressly allowed by special permit and consistent with the nineteen ninety-two master plan as it has been updated. Okay, Joe, have you had a chance to uh look at your notes?
Yeah, and my notes, basically, we didn't formally discuss the finding effects, but there were many finding effects noted by us listening to the hearing. But basically, you know, number one and two of the finding effects is always, we know what the property is, the property is where it's located with the, within the condominium association. The second one is that the plan has been filed and we just put into the title what the title of that plan is. Right? So I don't have the title, the full title in front of me at the moment, but obviously I would note that finding a fact is what is the plan title and what is the property for this project. And then we have the fact that this is a under two hundred and fifty K uh kilowatt ground-mounted solar system, right? Which, you know, and is not considered a large ground-mounted array by the town of Norfolk, if I'm correct? Right, so it, so but it's, it is um by special permit, they're allowed to have this. If I'm correct.
Correct.
Okay. They have to make an adjustment to the access road, but it's also to the benefit of the town that this access road will give the town the ability to access the water tank without having to pay for the access to that tank that they have in the past. Correct? All right.
Access by gravel road?
By gravel road, right? Right? Some of the findings of facts you just mentioned in some of the um criteria or some of the um which you just read through is has some of the the mentions of the abut, of the um
Screening and.
Screening and fencing was in there, right? So there'll be screening, there'll be fencing. They also have the planning board included a condition that they will revisit this at the time of the installation or complete of the installation.
Correct.
Right, and to to just re-review that to make sure that the the abutters concerns have been addressed, I basically, I think is the ca, is the uh goal there. Okay, is there something else I'm missing?
The array is, I think it was two hundred.
How many, how many panels is this?
Devin, do you recall how many panels this was? I don't recall offhand.
Well, am I count the number of racks?
No, I think it's six eighty-four. I'm looking at the minutes now. It looks like it's six eighty-four was in the minutes. The array is six hundred and eighty-four units, right? Or is somebody looking at the plans to confirm that?
Uh I got the plans open right now. I'm trying to find it.
Yeah.
And this has been approved by the planning board, correct, Amy?
Yes, got it.
Yes.
A minimal, I think, mentioned, I think, uh minimal change in, change in elevations. I think I, but maybe a better way, Devin, minimal change in elevation. They're actually gonna use stilts or uh to actually set up the array so that they're actually, besides cutting down the trees, they're not gonna be regrading the entire slope of the hill. Is that a, is that a fair assumption, Devin, to make?
That that's a fair assumption. They they got some, just it doesn't look like there's really any, they they don't overlay the grading with the panels, but it doesn't look like there's any grading actually where those panels go. It's just gonna sit right on the a natural grade.
Right.
Right, yeah, I I noted that. And then I was gonna mention that we know that the um the condo association, it's fifteen point eight acres, and this project only covers about one acre total.
Correct.
Correct.
I mean, I'm not sure if we need any more findings of fact here. Do we have to note that there was a sidewalk uh as a finding of fact, or is that we kind of learn these facts from that sidewalk?
Yeah, I think we'll, I think that's a good point. We'll put that in there, that everybody attended but Mike.
All right, well, the members of the ZBA attended a sidewalk.
Hey, easy.
Want to make sure you're awake over there.
Um Mike was busy redoing the wallpaper on his back wall there.
All right.
Hey, leave my wallpaper alone.
All right.
Yeah, every, some people like nineteen seventy-two wallpaper, Don.
I know in the uh the detail record, we have things that maybe the abutters mentioned, uh concerns about the 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 water flow towards their properties. As far as there, is there a particular finding of fact for that, or is it just that they it's in the detail minutes that he spoke up about it, but we're not finding any particular issue with the grading or no change in the existing grading?
I don't, I don't think we found any, anything wrong with the the proposed uh retention ponds or the uh their 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 plan to to accommodate the hundred-year storm.
Right, that would change the current character of the uh.
Correct.
Okay. All right, so I guess finding of facts, we have plenty in this case.
Do we go finding a fact the solar panels are non-reflective? Just as a part of the visual nuisance part of this.
Do, do we recall this, does that come up during any part?
It's on the set of plans.
It it states it, is what you're saying?
Yes, it states non-reflective solar panels.
So that that would be right, that the solar panels are non-reflective would be a finding of fact. And which obviously that would not, that would, if it was, it would be detrimental to the neighborhood, so.
Right, so so, yeah, so per the uh the 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 plans that are filed, the solar panels will be non-reflective.
Correct.
Got it.
Okay. Good. All right. And we have our criteria, so could I have a motion to grant to Next Grid Incorporated?
Well, oh, oh, question. So we're saying we've got all the findings of fact, there's no special, we're putting in this.
Say again, Don?
There's no special.
Yeah, conditions. We haven't talked about any conditions.
We haven't talked about any special conditions, right?
All right, yeah, I mean, I think the planning board has a condition with regard to the to the evergreens. Already, they're gonna revisit it after it's done to see if they want to extend beyond the crisscross more evergreens. They were, they're, they're, they're already requested a fence. I think they said a black-coated fence be installed, so is there any other conditions that we would like to put on this permit?
That that if, if the planning board has retained the the responsibility for or the authorization to um make changes to the um evergreen buffer, then I'm comfortable with that. We could say the finding of fact that we, that the plant, that the ZBA supports the planning board's uh established conditions for this project, such as those two items. Okay, okay. Yeah, and Chris, I should, I should also note there's no special lighting being added to this project, am I correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, no, got it. All right, so I I don't believe we need to add a condition to this.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I could think of, I don't even think. Getting a lot of feedback. Is the, could this solar array be increased in size?
It's Mr. Kaliza giving the feedback here.
What's that?
I said I'm seeing the feedback from your computer.
What do you mean?
Turn up, turn up, mute your.
There's a chance you have your mic on.
Yeah. Rich is, Rich, is there any um I, did the planning board at all discuss them increasing this field at some point? Or coming back, or is it pretty much, is this pretty much the optimum? Sounds like this is pretty much the optimum they can do.
There wasn't any discussion about expanding it beyond what's proposed.
Okay, and if they did, and if they would have to go back to obviously the planning board and the zoning board, I imagine, correct?
Yes, yeah. Cause I'm trying to think, um.
Yeah, that is a good que, that is a good question. I mean, all these uh solar arrays, they would have to come back to any, to the boards to expand them, I believe, right?
I would hope so, yeah.
I, I mean, I I'd be fine if you know, allowing expansion within the approved uh fence line or limit of clearing or both.
Pretty sure they've maxed out what they can do within this, you know, the 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 clearing area. I can pull up the planning board permit, I believe, I think there is a condition in there about any changes would have to go back in to the plan that you have in.
All right, as long as it's there.
I mean, uh to to be honest, these solar panels, it it's amazing how fast they're changing right now. With, I I think just how many developments are going on year to year. Everything changes, the racking, the panels, you name it, so.
They're typically getting smaller, aren't they, Devin, as well, now larger, aren't they? The ability to consolidate the number of panels in a certain space.
Yes and no. I mean, it's getting, generating more power, I think, from the area.
Okay.
Could that mean that the arrays are getting, the panels are getting thicker possibly?
It's just more efficient.
Right.
Okay. So any other, any other concerns with regard to conditions?
Yeah, but we're not having, we're not putting any formal condition on this, am I correct? Okay.
I haven't heard of any. That's why I'm just asking.
Right, then I'm just making sure I got it down right.
So this part about the planning board having the authorization or whatever you, how you word it, to examine the vegetation barrier and make changes as they feel are necessary. That's part of, of the conditions, not part of any, that's not part of the condition. It's actually a, a part of the facts, correct?
That, I'm gonna make it part of the facts that they have these conditions on it. And the ZBA supports those conditions.
Excellent. Okay, I'm good.
Good. Okay. All right. So we have a motion to grant NextGrid Inc. A special permit in accordance with D2B7 for a ground mounted solar system, which requires a special permit in accordance with the town of Norfolk zoning bylaws.
Right. To allow, allow a large scale ground mounted solar photovoltaic system. The property located 45 Meeting House Road, Sessos Map 14, Block 41, Lot 9, in the B1 zoning district. I make the motion.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. We'll, we'll, we'll poll the board. This is a motion. Sure.
Did we say in our findings that it was not a large scale?
It is a large scale.
They, they've, they claimed it was not a large scale, but I think the kilowatts was 249 points. So I just rounded up and said it was a large scale. We kind of debated about that, but.
I just want to make sure that our finding of fact matches what the permit's for.
Well, they need the permit for a large scale system, right?
Yes.
Correct.
So we should, so even though in our, in our minutes, we do say that the applicant stated the project is, the planned project was to be under 250 kilowatts. Richard said just under. But then we said in the minutes that, which is not considered a large ground mounted solar by the town of Norfolk. So how do we handle that, Rich?
Well, like I said, I, by default, by rounding that, maybe from a technical standpoint, from but from our bylaw, it was 249.6, I think. So I rounded it up. I mean, but my general math education says point five, round up, right? Round down, so I
Right.
We did a, a large scale.
Right.
I don't know, Rich, that's, that's point oh four below. It's lower.
We count on you, Rich, to make these applications easy for us.
I'm not, I'm not trying to convolute this. I'm just trying to.
No, but that's a good point, Devin, because we're saying one thing in the minutes or in the presentation, and we're saying another thing, but it requires the special permit for it to be a large scale system like this.
Hence, that's why they're before you.
Right, right. So I mean, we have to acknowledge in the finding of facts that this is a large scale system. Right? And they're, they're just under 250 kilowatts, or they, basically, it is 250 kilowatts?
Yes, we do.
All right. So I'll make sure in the finding of facts, we're referencing both the fact that it's 250 kilowatts and that it's a large scale system as required by the permit. As required to get this permit.
Sounds good.
All right. Does the motion stand to accept of it to grant?
It's Now we have to fully, so this is a motion, yes, to grant this special permit. Mike Kaliza?
Yes, to grant.
Joe Sebastiano?
Yes, to grant.
Don Hanson?
Yes, to grant.
Tim Martin? Oh, Tim, can you hear us? Can you unmute him? Rich, can you unmute Tim?
He can unmute himself.
He's good. Go ahead, Tim.
Yes, to grant.
And Josephine? Who has to unmute herself?
Yes, to grant.
And I don't know, Devin, I didn't ask you yet, Devin, how?
Yes, to grant.
Christopher Leader, yes, to grant. Very good. All right. That's taken care of. All right. Anybody else have anything else to add this evening? I think we've pretty much covered everything. Amy, do you have anything else for us this evening? Amy, unmute yourself, Amy.
I do not have anything else.
I, I, I just want to confirm that our next meeting, if, if you could confirm that with me, Amy, is on the 20th, correct?
Yes, it is.
And is there a meeting on May 27th? No, okay.
Okay. Going somewhere, Don?
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna get an airplane. No.
All right.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn tonight's meeting of the zoning board of appeals at nine, my time I have is about nine
Thirty-six.
Thirty-seven PM Eastern Daylight Savings Time.
Or after your martini, I don't know where.
No martinis. I'm going to bed tonight. I'm exhausted.
We have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you. Thank you, Amy.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Right.
Good night, Mike.
Thank you.